Begin our February meeting with Pledge Your Flag, please.
Pledge your flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, they are experimenting here this evening again, so when you speak, try to speak into your microphone because they are taping this and then we're trying to set up where we're going to be taped on a regular basis, so please be clear into the microphones and the guests use the microphone to say anything. Okay. This time if everybody's had a chance to look over the minutes and operating statements for January and work session for February, line for a motion to or for approval if that's okay.
I make a motion that we approve the January operating statements, January 22, 2024 council meeting minutes, February 12, 2024 work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statements for January 2024.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and second, are there any questions? Alden's favor, aye?
Aye.
Stop. There should be, my mistake, did you have the closed session minutes in there?
It wasn't in the statement, but they are in here, so you want those included?
Yes, please.
Do you want me to say it again?
Just add the closed session minutes.
Yeah, add the closed session minutes from February 12, 2024.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right, motion and a second, any questions? Hearing done, Alden's favor, aye?
Aye.
No's, motion's carried, okay. Getting right down to the mayor's report, I think everybody's gotten their letter from Newt Clark reference to the chapter meeting for next month, like everybody that can attend, that will be in Westminster, fill those out and get them back so that we can figure out what we're going to do with that chapter meeting. We have a report, we have a, for the circuit rider for next year, it's for Mike Reynolds, that we have a circuit rider we share with New Windsor, the cost will remain at $1,250 for the year, that's our portion of what we have to pay. It also includes, we have a manager memorandum under agreement and the compliance that we have to, Maryland assurance of a compliance and workplace and other requirements, it's all in the same agreement. Hoping the council is happy with the work that Mike's been doing for us and we'd like to make a motion to continue the services with our circuit rider.
I'll make a motion that we reapply for the Circuit Rider Town Manager Program with the annual fee remaining at $1,250 and authorizing the mayor to sign the resolution, authorizing the town to participate in the program memorandum of agreement between MRDC and Union Bridge and the assurances agreement required by the state of Maryland.
I'll second that.
Okay, with a motion and a second, are there any questions? Hearing done, Alden's, Brett?
Are we only doing the town manager resolution or are we doing all three?
All three.
All three.
All three combined.
That's what you said.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? Hearing done, Aldos in favor, aye?
Aye.
No's, okay.
Laura, you have to sign that too.
Okay. Do you want Perry to sign it first?
Doesn't matter.
Sign it first.
Passing down for...
Ellen?
I did.
Okay, the only other thing that I have, we've had, in the last several weeks, we've had a lot of complaints with cats in town, and I don't know how to solve the problem other than people would stop feeding them. We have a couple places in town where people come down and just bring food to them twice in two, three times a day, and as long as you continue to feed them, they're going to keep coming back. I mean, it's like any other thing, if you feed them, they're coming back. And we have one place up here in the alley, they have a little building there and the lady walks down there continuously, makes sure they have feed, water, and several other places in town, people are complaining about them being on their porch, getting the smell, and it's only going to get worse because warm weather's coming, so I don't know what to tell you about, you know, other than this, you know, we got some people that are animal lovers in town and they just go around, some of them catch them and take them down and get them neutered and stuff and bring them back, but it's still, it's, there's almost as many cats in town as there are people, and it's a shame. I don't know what we can do with them, I'm not going to make any suggestions because it probably wouldn't be good, so I don't know, we just have to tell these people, you know, to stop feeding them, do something with them, because it's just, they're getting out of hand, and the Humane Society won't come after them, you can catch them and you can take them down and they'll take them, but they will not come after them, you have to take them, get a cage and take them down there yourself, but it's the best thing we can tell people, you know, even though these other ladies and these guys are keep feeding them every day, if you think they're going to be a nuisance, you just start catching them and take them down to the Humane Society and drop them off, and it's the best thing I can tell you. We just have to try to start eliminating them best way we can, but it is going to be a problem with warm weather coming and, you know, I don't want them on my porch, and they're not going to be on my porch, I can guarantee you, but handle them the best way you can. All right, we're going to go down to Mandy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all will recall, last meeting, ordinance 319 was introduced, ordinance 319 is authorizing the conditional sale of a portion of land to Magbolt LLC, which is a flood zone. Essentially, they had encroached onto town property and they have offered to purchase that property in lieu of leasing, and which the town had agreed to do. It contains roughly 11,232 square feet, and Magbolt has agreed to purchase it for $2,000 plus any and all costs associated with the sale and transfer. This was introduced at the last meeting, it has been advertised twice in the Carroll County Times, once was on February 8 of 2024, and the second time was February 15, 2024, stating that this was going to be, a public hearing was going to be held and potentially passage at the meeting, and if the ordinance is passed tonight, it will take effect 20 days from tonight's meeting.
I know we had some concerns with the property and, you know, with selling it, and our biggest concern with, for no more than a piece of a ground, it is with the potential of liability with somebody's falling in extreme and trying to sue the town or whatever, for something that we didn't know that was ours, it's best to just get rid of it and let him worry about that liability, hopefully it never happens, but in a day's world, you never know.
And there is a 15-foot grading easement included.
Right, that stays there.
Correct.
We always have that. Okay, so we need a motion to go ahead and...
I make a motion that we approve the town of Union Bridge ordinance number 319 for the sale of property to Jerry Stanball.
I'll second it.
To Magbolt.
Magstone.
Magbolt LLC.
Yeah.
Let's see this one here, Jerry.
I know.
Okay, to Magbolt LLC.
There you go.
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions? Hearing done, Aldos in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No's, okay, all right.
Want to state that you recuse yourself?
I'm going to recuse myself, Perry.
Okay.
Okay. All right, and next on the list, which I thought last time we had this resolved, is the cellular tower sublease with, between GTP Towers 1 LLC and the town. After the town signed the original agreement that we went back and forth with legal counsel for, they came back with additional revisions, and I actually got on the phone with legal counsel from GTP Towers 1, which is American Towers, and spoke to them about their concerns related to the agreement that we had originally signed. I am not concerned with the changes, and the one reason why is because legal counsel included language in here that will allow the town to request a reconciliation and accounting of all revenues from American Towers once per year, which, that was the concern, that it had went a few years without us knowing what was going in, what was coming back out. So instead of anytime the lease changes or is revised, we're going to be able to request that once per year, and that's written into the agreement, so that is the reason why I am not concerned with the changes that were made to this, because they included that language. I think that satisfies where the town was at and their concerns as to what has happened in the past with T-Mobile, so I have a new approval and authorization for the cellular tower sublease that I am asking for the town to review and sign.
Okay. Boy, there's a lot of signing here tonight.
And that is all I have for today.
Okay, all right, Kevin?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Well, I'm sorry, missed your last one, feels like I haven't been in here.
You were down there laying on the beach, you were having fun.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he was.
You know what the ironic part is, though, I was going over the briefing and there were no reports in January, so I guess I got to go to Florida more often.
Take us with you.
All right, so between December 18 and February, December 8, 23 and February 26, 2024, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to 114 calls for service within the town of Union Bridge, out of those calls for service, eight were reportable. On 12/28/23 at 9:02 a.m., a family offense was reported in the area of Lightner Street, a four-year-old was reported missing, this child was located unharmed, and a referral was sent to Child Protective Services. On 12/28/23 at 5:43 p.m., a citation was issued for tobacco sale to a minor on West Broadway Street. On 2/1/24 at 1:02 a.m., units started responding to South Farquhar Street for a domestic in progress, while route the suspect drove away in a pickup truck which was located on West Broadway Street. The suspect was later located with the pickup truck and charged with the suspicion of driving under the influence of alcohol, hopefully I worded that right. That make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, good. On 2/2/24 at 5:12 a.m., a domestic assault was reported at South Farquhar Street, the suspect was arrested for a domestic assault and transported to the Carroll County Central Booking. On 2/18/24 at 11:25 a.m., a theft was reported on East Elver Street, the victim alleged that while they were staying at the suspect's residence, they were asked to leave, the victim was then not allowed to retrieve their phone, the phone was later located by Frederick PD in a storm drain, and the victim did not want to pursue charges after that, so good thing they got their phone back, but... On 2/19/24 at 3:53 p.m., a theft was reported in the 40 block of North Main Street, several parts, the locomotives were actually reported stolen. When I was doing some research into this case, it appeared all these were exhausted at this time, however, there's multiple thousands of dollars of stolen parts. On 2/22/24 at 3:58 p.m., an industrial accident was recorded in the area of Quakerville Road, the subject was using an oxygen torch to cut metal, which ultimately ignited, the subject was transported to Station 8, and then to Hopkins Bayview, motion was contacted, the whole nine yards. All right, on 2/23/24 at 12/22 p.m., a warrant service was completed on Penrose Street, the subject was served and was cooperative, however, additional witnesses inserted themselves into the situation, expressing displeasure in the situation. This resulted in just the documentation of the incident, just a regular warrant service, but it was documented. On other notes, I attended a county wide, it would be a coalition meeting back in January, I want to say that this was a really good meeting. Kevin Kornick with New Windsor was actually at the meeting as well, and we took away some things from it, I had brought it up in their meeting, but I just wanted to bring it up to you guys, that maybe I can start spinning the wheels here and thinking about ways to get awareness of resources into the community, naloxin training, and maybe even get it available in certain situations. I know they had talked about getting it at the fire department up there, maybe to hand out, we did have a couple fatal overdoses collectively between here and New Windsor last year, so, you know, one is too many, in my opinion, and get people the help they need. And with that being said, there has been, when I was looking at the calls for service for overdoses on our reports, it seemed like between January and March of last year, there was a big spike, and without saying too much, I've noticed an influx of calls for drug trafficking, drug abuse, drug sales in the area around this time. So if there's anything that anyone sees or anything that concerns anyone, please forward it my way, I'm investigating a few different operations right now, per se, without saying too much, but keep an eye out, if there's anything you can pass along to me, certainly we'll get the resources out there. Also, I met with Springdale Preparatory about a basketball game, this was actually brought up by Ms. Teresa, I don't know if you have had the pleasure of meeting her, she's a wonderful lady, so she wanted to get a basketball game coordinated with the youth in the area, particularly middle school age students, and get them involved with Springdale and the students there, just to have a good, positive sports event, basically, and we're working to get that coordinated, it's separate April 4th as of right now, but the Lions Club is sponsoring the event, from what I believe, I don't, I know they have internal meetings about that as well, but they're still working on the registrations and getting all that out there, and we're trying to get the whole process moving there, just wanted to let you guys know. Also, steering wheel lock devices, Dawn, have we gotten rid of any of those? All right.
A couple.
Okay, a couple, so I said the same thing next door, we have plenty of them, we had grant-funded resources for that, they're free, they're quality steering devices, I took one down to Florida with me, like I said, over there, my wife drives a Kia, and I was concerned with the areas that we were going to and, you know, the areas we were traveling, and took one with me, and it works great, I mean, they're free, it can't be free, we have steering wheel lock devices in the lobby here at Town Hall to hand out, so anyone that wants one, come get one, and that...
You can invite Uber and just give everybody one before they get you.
We could do that, too, I could do that, too, if they want one, really, you know, they can get one, so anyhow, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And my wife has a kid, too, and we have one, and there are certain places we go that, you know, we went to Oink Mills last Sunday for a tournament basketball game, and I used it down there at college just in case.
Yeah.
And go to the airport and different places, we do use it.
Yeah, come with me.
The folks riding the dirt bike, do you know anything about that, or...
That was just brought to my attention tonight, I wasn't working Saturday, but I heard that there was a couple dirt bikes that were...
Yeah, it's not all the time, but it's more than, would you say it's often? Yeah.
So...
We're not, we're not doing ball Mercedes stuff here.
Right, 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 and it sounds pretty egregious what they were doing, I know sometimes we do get complaints, I have one there with the young individual riding ATV in the park a couple weeks ago on Donny's Trails down there, and I had to educate them, no motorized vehicles on the trails, doesn't matter if it's electric, doesn't matter if it's gas, it's not allowed on the trails, you know, the liability with that, if somebody could get hit and injured in a heartbeat, so, but there's that residence, I believe, I know where that's coming from, and there's also the other one on the other side of the street, on Main Street, and we're going to get you, we're going to get you eventually, I mean, we know where you live, if you keep on doing these things, it's going to come and bite you, you know, that we've got enough farms around here people can ride on, and they probably know somebody with a farm, so they ought to take it that direction instead of in town.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Just so you're aware, I...
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comments and concerns. Ravens are done for this year.
It's time to be wearing some orange in here now.
No, I don't wear orange, orange is not my color. I like gray with the stripes.
Okay. We later in the door, too. Okay, all right, committee reports, we got here on, right here, we got Laura with the contract.
All right, so our mowing contract is up for renewal, and this will run between, for the years 2024 through 2027. Dawn, how much of this do you want me to read, just the price?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so the new price for the year April 1, 2024 till March 31, 2025 is $926.44 per month, or $11,117.28 per year. The price for April 1, 2025 through March 31, 2026 will be $936.44 a month, or $11,237.28 per year, and the price for April 1, 2026 through March 31, 2027 will be $946.44 per month, or $11,357.28 for the year. The price is good for three years if no more areas are added, and the fuel charge will be added if price, if fuel prices exceed $3.75 a gallon. And I make a motion that we accept the contract for RLS contracting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any questions? I wouldn't do it for that, but good for them.
And they do a great job for that.
A great job, okay. Aldos in favor, aye?
Aye.
No's, all right, motion's carried on that.
Also in our packet is an estimate for a shed, Shriner Court is looking to buy a shred, shed for their property, and if they have money in their budget, they have permission to buy it, it's just a matter of whether or not they have money already allocated for it, so...
And this is just a portable, such on...
Yes, Ellen said it's for snow blower salts with maintenance.
It's for the maintenance guy and maintenance equipment, because right now they have no real storage in that community building, you know, if you need to store toilets somewhere, you stick it wherever, but there's no room for it.
Okay.
So, and the place where they're planning to put it is, if you're looking at the community building, it's to the left of the community building, where currently there's a pipe sticking up for a umbrella to a picnic table that's no longer there.
The portable building doesn't even, it's on a skid, so doesn't even need, they said they take care of permits, and they obviously don't even need a permit because that's on a skid, so...
Well, I may have to level it a little bit, set it in there.
Okay, so you want my report now?
Yes.
Okay. On January 27, Joy Bowman, property manager for Shriner Court, reached out to me regarding a continued problem with a resident's hot water heater, at the time she was unable to reach on call maintenance person, and the plumber wasn't able to come out until Monday, she later reached out to let me know that she was able to get the on, one call maintenance person to handle it. On January 31, I visited Elmer Wolf Elementary to invite the fourth graders to participate in Maryland Municipal League's If I Were Mayor contest. On February 2, I received a text from Deputy Kevin McGinnis about an incident at a residence already deemed a nuisance by our abatement committee, and I reached out to Mandy for counsel. On February 2nd, I requested a PIA for the month of January. On February 5, I corresponded with Mandy regarding the nuisance above, and on the 5th, I also completed the Banner City application for 2024. Let me see, on February 12, I had a Shriner Court meeting, on February 12, I received a message from a resident asking permission for her teen daughter to drive an electric four-wheeler on the parking lot across from the fire department, I called and left a message for her that the lot is owned by the Union Bridge Fire Company and advised her to contact them. On February 13, I initiated contact with Sherri to advise her that the power outage affected the stoplights and stop signs should be placed at the intersection. On February 14, I received a voicemail from Sharon Easton at MML saying the Banner for City Form was missing information, and it was jumbled, so I resubmitted the form. On the 15th, I received a message from a landlord saying that she had, she had heard about the nuisance that, from February 2, and wanted to see if I had heard about it and wanted some information about that, so we drafted a letter and sent that to her. On the 17th, I received a message through our Facebook page that our newsletter was not uploaded to the town's website, I emailed Dawn to let her know. On the 19th, I stopped in Town Hall, picked up a copy of the newsletter, scanned it, uploaded it to our Facebook page, and then Dawn had said that Chris will look into why it didn't load properly. On the 22nd, I met with Ellen to prepare for the Tony Town Lions baseball MOU meeting. For the record, we are not against teams using our fields, but as elected officials, it is our duty to ensure that we look after the town's best interest. The MOU, as it was written, was one of the town to pay for all maintenance to buildings and playing fields, which is not in our budget and not something we have done in the past. On the 23rd, I met with Tony Town Lions Board of Directors, Town Liaison, Tom Marble, Concerned Resident and Council Member Ellen Cutzell to discuss the MOU to use the town baseball fields, the MOU was poorly written and, as written, was not in the best interest of the town. After discussing and clarifying the MOU, they will rewrite it and submit it back to the council for approval, and we will then forward it to our town attorney, Mandy Porter, and until that time, they are allowed to use the field for the spring 2024 season and may begin their spring maintenance to prepare the fields. And on the 26th, I emailed teachers at Elmer Wolf to see if they needed anything for submitting their essays to the If I Were Mayor contest. That's all.
Thank you.
So the ball fields, they're going to go ahead and use them without an MOU?
They're going to just use them without any expectation of us giving them anything until they resubmit the MOU.
Okay.
And then we'll discuss it, hopefully we'll have it by the next work session, and then if it's satisfactory, if it's satisfactory to us, then we'll ask Mandy to review it.
But no one else is using the fields, correct?
Yeah.
I don't know why we need an MOU, but...
They were asking us to...
It's the things they were asking for in the MOU.
I know what the original one said, yes.
And we did say that we didn't need an MOU, that we'd worked with the West Carroll Rec League for years and never had an MOU that I knew of, however, evidently there was a problem with another town where they were using their ball fields, and the town turned around and kicked them off the ball field in favor of a travel team that was going to pay them money.
I see.
Yeah.
So they wanted to make sure that wouldn't happen.
After they had invested on the dirt for the field and stuff, and they didn't want to be out the money for that or the labor.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's a shame that it's kind of split from that league from the rec council leagues, you know, it's going to wreck, so it's...
I don't think the rec council has the ball league, ball teams that they have.
They don't have a ball, they have all the other teams, but no ball team, so...
Yeah.
And they're just having a baseball field, so you're not going to use them.
Absolutely, I'm glad that someone wants to use them.
I am, too, because actually they do it early spring, and then when schools are about the end of June, the field sets from then until late fall, unless somebody goes up and uses it, so you've got the best part of the summer, the fields aren't being used, so hopefully now with as many teams as they have, it'll get a little bit more use because I think they're overwhelmed with as many kids they have in that league area that they use Terraruba, they use Tony Town, different fields, they use Elmer Wolf, and they'll be using this one.
Practice starts in March.
Right.
And they use it through, did they say the end of June?
Yes.
July, well, July 1st, they'd be finished.
July. And then they'd be back in from, was it August to October, November?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, maybe they'll get some more use out of it.
That'd be great.
Yep, all right, Brett?
Hey, we had an RFP out for Thomas Street Water Main Project, we got two bids, one from DSM Properties LLC for $54,430 and one from Mid-Atlantic Utilities for $98,385. Mike has verified all references provided for DSM Properties LLC, very favorable reports and the work performed by them. Inspections will be coordinated between Mike Zackman, Jeff Glass, or Mike Zackman, and we need a motion to approve the contract for DSM Properties to do the water main install. And I will so move.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay.
It's made motion and Ellen has seconded. Are there any questions?
Is this for a replacement or a new line or what?
Yes, new line.
New line.
New line.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in Faye Rye?
The inspections that they'll be coordinating, is that for the actual line or does that include the reinstillation of the soil and the proper compaction?
That's everything. Our guys will inspect everything.
Okay, that's all.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in Faye Rye?
Aye.
Those, motion's carried.
Dawn and, and Mike and I met with Jeff Glass and Mike Zackman about the, uh, that service line requirement from, uh, EPA. We have to, every property in town has to identify the material that their service line is, uh, made of. So it, it's a huge undertaking even for a small town with four hundred connections. Um, but, uh, we're working on that. We're gonna send out a letter and we're gonna ask residents to take a picture of where the line enters their, their home. And we'll take care of the other side, uh, out at the street. But we need them to do that and if they need help, we can provide that, uh, service. But if they can take a picture of it, let us know whether it's copper, galvanized, PVC, God forbid, lead. I don't think there's any lead service lines in town, but we have to do the work. And we have to identify each one of them. It has to be done by October twenty-fourth of this year. And, um, and then we'll start, uh, remediation. Any lead service line obviously has to be replaced. Uh, galvanized lines, if they were ever downstream of a lead gooseneck or a lead service line, that has to be replaced as well because the galvanized can, uh, take, you know, hold the lead in, in the deposits in the pipe. So we, we got some work to do there. So we're, we're just getting started on that. But we'll get the, we'll get the letters out here in another week or so and we'll have a, um, an email address where they can email, uh, the information and, and hopefully pictures. We'd, we'd really like to have pictures so we can verify.
And let me know, Brett, that's just not us. That's the whole United States. That's everybody.
It's everybody. I can't imagine the big cities, uh. Honestly, I don't know that they'll ever get it done, truly. Okay, and there's five homes out on, uh, Main Road, Main Street, past Honeysuckle Lane that have, uh, ejector cans for the sewage in there because they're too loaded gravity into the sewer. And that came about, what, twenty years ago? I don't know. When, when we put the sewer line in for Honeysuckle Lane because of failed septics. And these folks agreed to hook up, uh, under the, the, uh, agreement, really. It was pretty much verbal at the time, but that once the, uh, the development below there was, was, um, was constructed, you know, was finished out, that they would then be able to connect to gravity sewer that way. Well, that hasn't happened. The Bowman property is, I mean, is pretty much dead at this point. So, they've been responsible for replacing these pumps for all these years and they're quite expensive. So, uh, what I propose is that the town purchase pumps have them here and then if they have one fail, they can contract with a, a plumber to, uh, replace it. But we will supply the pump. They will pay for the install. But it's, it's a burden on, I mean, these pumps are, they're like thirty-seven hundred dollars apiece. I would hate to wake up one morning and know that I had to come out of pocket for thirty-seven hundred dollars plus an install fee. So that's what I would like to do. I moved it to town, purchased a, a pump. We, we could, should have just one pump because they're not, uh, terribly hard to get. Uh, but we could have one pump here in the event that they have one fail.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Questions?
Are you actually talking about Union Bridge Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's Main Street, kinda, sorta.
Main, yeah. Cause off Main Street extended.
Once you go around the corner, it's.
Union Bridge Road.
Union Bridge Road.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure we're talking about the right place for the record.
You are correct.
Not being a picky person.
No, no, I picked it. You, you just gave it back.
Yeah, I tried.
That's okay. Alright.
We have motion and a second. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in Faye Rye?
Aye.
Those, motion's carried.
And we're still working on the PFOS, uh, issue. That's, um, that, that's gonna be a road, uh, because of the cost and the, uh, not really knowing how the technology's gonna play out for removing PFOS. Luckily, I have people in Westminster that are working on this also that I can, uh, pick their brains on, uh, they're, they're pilot testing a system right now. And, uh, so hopefully they'll have positive results and we can use that to, to help us. But it's either ion exchange or, uh, granular, uh, carbon to remove it. We'll probably end up with carbon because, uh, of the hardness of the water. It will, the hardness competes with space on the media for ion exchange. So it will wear out, fill up quicker. Uh, it's not so bad with the carbon. But we still have to do the, the due diligence. We have to pilot test something for a while and, and then actually go full scale. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be quite expensive, uh, because, like, carbon, you can, you can regenerate granular activated carbon and, and then reuse it. But you can't with this because PFOS is, is a contaminant. So even with the ion exchange, you can backwash, it's just like a water softener. You can backwash it with brine, refresh it, use it again. But you can't with the PFOS because that puts that PFOS load on your wastewater system. And eventually we will have a PFOS limit on wastewater effluent. So we, we need to remove it, not just send it to the wastewater plant. So that means it has to go somewhere. Right now, there's a, uh, place in, it's either Illinois or Iowa. I, I think it's Illinois, but it's a waste of energy burn facility, you know, that will burn it. But I have no, I, I don't, I don't know what it's gonna cost, but it, it won't be cheap. Nothing's cheap. But, um, we do have a small amount of PFOS in our water, so we have to do it. We're, we're in the beginning phases of that. We have to do an, an RFP for engineering and, and the pilot testing. As soon as that's out, can award that and go to the next step.
Okay.
I think that's enough for tonight.
Good job.
Ellen?
Um, during February, I had various times that I went out checking on overtime parking, trailer parking, parking the wrong way, things like that. Um, on the twenty-second, I met with Laura to prepare for the meeting with TLB about the MOU. On the twenty-third, we met with, Laura and I met with TLB and Donnie Wilson about the MOU. Explained why what they had given us was a problem. They explained they got it from somewhere else and was trying to open the doors. And I said meetings, person to person, were a much better way to do that than, than something that was so over the top. They are supposed to be returning their, um, updated MOU to me. I thought I would have it before today, but I, as of the time I left to come down here, I still didn't have it. As soon as they do, I'll meet with Laura and go over it and make sure they've touched all the bases that we were talking about. And then present it to the town and the lawyer to make sure that Laura and I didn't miss anything that messes the town up. Um, other than that, a couple conversations with Ken Kiefer about things with the community center. And that was the extent of my February.
Okay, thank you. Sher.
Okay, January, obviously I attended the council meeting. In February, I attended the work session. I reported three street lights out. I had requested the stop signs be put out when the electric went out after, um, Laura had notified me that the electric was out because I was in Westminster at work, so I had no idea. Um, I had one trash issue where the residence trash wasn't picked up, but it was resolved the following week. And she said she put it out where she always does, so I, it's just one of those quirky things, so that's all I have.
Alright. Okay, looks like, uh, I don't have anything else. Our next work session will be March the eleventh. Our next council meeting will be March the twenty-fifth. Is there anything that I may have missed? Did we miss anything, Dawn?
I think so.
Okay. Okay.
Just a point of record, if you do need to get the, let me say it right, nalox- naloxus, well, however you say it.
Narcan?
Yeah, Tawney Town Library has them on display for free. You can just pick them up. Don't know of any place in Union Bridge, but that's not that far.
Only thing I can say, it sounds, it's a good thing, but when you use it on a patient, be very, very careful. Right, Kevin? Because sometimes they can be very violent when they come to.
And that's what they tell you when they give you the training?
It's, it's nice to be Mr. Good Guy, but there's a fifty-fifty chance that that patient may get very violent and you could be injured. So.
If you should decide you wanna do something like that here, the health department turns out on the training.
Yes. So, it's entirely up to you. Alright, so hearing nothing else, we will see you next month and thank you very much for coming to our meeting. We are adjourned.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion when you adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Any questions? Hearing none, all those in Faye Rye?
Aye.
Those, motion is carried.